I will call to order the March 4th, 2025, meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council. If we could have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andrews.
President.
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Rivasio.
Here. And now if you could join us all for a pledge to the allegiance to the flag. Thank you very much. As always, we will start our meeting with an open time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the town concerning any item that is not on tonight's council agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified, and the public will be given an opportunity to speak on each agenda item as its time is called. So do we have anyone in the public who has any comments to open up our meeting tonight? Nobody? With all of you out there? Okay, what about online?
We do not have any hands raised online, and we didn't receive any emailed public comment for open time.
Okay, all right, then we will move on. We have no presentations tonight. And item number four is the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been previously discussed and don't require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion unless someone elects to call an item off the consent calendar. That can be done either by a council member or a member of the public. So I'm wondering, we only have 4A and 4B, which are minutes of the previous council closed session and council regular meeting. Is there anyone who needs to pull anything from the agenda? From the consent calendar? Nothing down there? Okay. So I would entertain a motion on that? Wait, is there any comment on the consent calendar from the public? I'm sorry. Seeing none? And seeing none online, or?
Correct. No hands raised online and no emailed public comment for open time, I mean for the consent calendar.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Councilmember Andrews.
No.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay, moving on to public hearings. We have no public hearings tonight. So our first business item is to discuss and receive public comment, and then provide direction to staff regarding a new solid waste contract to be negotiated for residential and commercial solid waste collection services. And I believe we have a staff report on this.
And may- Yes, Mayor Rivasio and council members, I just want to introduce Scott Hannan and Claire Wilson. They're with R3 Consultants. Staff has hired R3 to support staff in sort of establishing an appropriate process for essentially navigating the beginning of considering negotiation for a new contract, waste, solid waste contract for services. As you are well aware, our contract ends at the end of 2026. And so now is the time to really start to discuss an appropriate process for making the decision about how we go forward with a new contract. And so Scott Hannan is here. He's the, works for R3 as a senior principal with the company. Is also former town manager or city manager, I should say, for about 15 years with El Cerrito. So has good management experience there as well. And Claire Wilson as well has worked with the town reviewing compliance, I should say, with SB 1383 and other state laws. And so both of them have good relevant experience working with the town. And I'm glad they're here to make a presentation and to help us have this conversation about next steps in this process, important process.
Excellent. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So as Adam teed it up for us, we are here to talk about your solid waste contract that is ending in just under two years. We have a short agenda for our presentation, going through the history, a little bit about your town services, what your options are for a new contract and new term, and town priorities and next steps. So this is to provide a transparent process and have you consider your options for this next phase in your solid waste services. So the town has a 20-year agreement currently with Mill Valley Refuge Service, MVRS, that began in 2006 and will end at the end of 2026, or yes, 2026. The agreement has only been amended once, and that was for compliance with SB 1383, Senate Bill 1383, which I'll talk a little bit about. And you'll have to arrange for services beginning January 1. So regardless of how you go about this, you will need a new contract and term beginning in just under two years. And that can really be done through a renegotiation process with your current hauler, MVRS, or through a competitive procurement process in which you go out to bid for the services. And you could also reserve the right to do both, essentially. Go through the renegotiation process and still reserve the right for competitive procurement. Next slide. So the agreement really hasn't been updated substantially since 2006. There's been a lot that has happened, both in the solid waste world with big state laws like SB 1383, AB 1826, which is mandatory commercial recycling, and composting laws, as well as the China National Sword Policy, which really upended recycling markets. So there's a lot that's happened. There's new business terms and just updated things that are required in a new, modern franchise agreement that, again, you would want to pursue if you have a new long-term agreement with a solid waste hauler. Next slide. And as I've mentioned already, SB 1383 was passed in 2016, was implemented in 2022, and really revolutionized how every city, county, district in the state does their collection and education and outreach requirements for recycling, organics, and landfill. It requires haulers to do things like route reviews, where you check for contamination, lots of education and outreach, edible food recovery, and other such activities. And the town has a great partner in Zero Waste Marin, who has taken on a lot of those requirements, as well as your hauler, Mill Valley Refuge Service. So just a little bit of a non-exhaustive list of your current services that you have with your agreement. First and foremost is weekly garbage. You have your dual-stream recycling for residential recycling and compost or organics for residents. For commercial, that is nearly the same, although most commercial businesses utilize that mixed recycling program. You also have a bulky item collection program in which residents can use up to four times per year, which is a very generous, four times a year service, that folks can get rid of things that cannot be reused or donated. You also have things like dumpsters, portable toilets, and street sweeping services included in your current contract with Mill Valley Refuge, dedicated town services for parks and things like that. And then compliance with SB 1383 and other state laws, as I've mentioned, 341 and organics for cycle, or mandatory recycling and organics for commercial generators. Next slide. So a little bit more about your current waste stream and where things are going. First and foremost, you, your garbage essentially goes to Redwood Landfill. Your recycling, your dual-stream goes to Marin Resource Recovery, and as well as the commercial. And your compost goes to Waste Management Earth Care, which is in the county. And your food, there's a smaller food scraps program that commercial businesses can utilize that goes to Marin Resource Recovery as well. So with those two things, with recycling and the organics, the town achieves a, you know, 66% diversion rate for residential services. That is above the requirement of the 50% diversion from landfill that AB 939 establishes, and is a fairly strong diversion rate in comparison to other cities and towns within the state. However, opportunities still exist for more composting and more recycling. Mill Valley Refuge was able to provide this chart below that really shows the available recycling in terms of volume that the town could achieve in the future. So there's opportunities for more, more material to go into those recycling and composting bins. Next slide. We also wanted to touch a bit around dual-stream and provide the council with an update as to where that is at. So with the dual-stream option for residential recycling, you have a contamination rate which is pretty low of 10.33% that we received from the company. In typical single-stream recycling, this is more in the range of 15% to 20% contamination. So the town has significantly less contamination, which helps with recyclability and marketability with those products, and for things like aluminum, glass, and other recyclables. We've heard from the company that the most common issue is really that folks get the wrong cart out on the wrong day. And there's been some efforts to institute a recycling pickup calendar. And I know community members are also helping with reminding folks about that. And as I've mentioned in the prior slide, that recycling is going to Marin Resource Recovery, MRC, which is the only MRF in Marin County right now. And to change to where that material is going would require a significant change in transportation costs, as well as a higher per-ton cost for recycling, a single-stream recycling compared to dual-stream. So you do have that one option there in the county, which keeps your rates lower than they could otherwise be. And that dual-stream allows for that lower contamination rate. Next slide. Just a quick slide here on your current town rates. As you can see, this is all of the jurisdictions, or all the contracts, I should say, in Marin County. And Corder Madera is highlighted in the red. You are, you know, slightly below the average of the county. And you can see below, although it's small, the other jurisdictions and districts that are serviced in Marin County, both by Mill Valley Refuge, Marin Sanitary Service, Bay Cities Refuge, and that far right yellow one is TAM CSD, which is a operation run by the Community Service District itself. Next slide. So moving forward into your options for your next solid waste contract. As I mentioned in the beginning, your options are really to negotiate with Mill Valley Refuge, to release a competitive RFP, or do both, renegotiate with the company. And if unsuccessful, still reserve the right for a competitive procurement. We'll go into a bit of the pros and cons. So the reasons to consider negotiations, first and foremost, are that the contractor, Mill Valley Refuge, is adequately providing the services. And no matter what, as much as you can plan and schedule for a new service provider, there's always going to be disruptions when you do have a new service provider. Procurement comes at a higher cost, both in terms of time for consultants and other things, but also for staff time in developing a new agreement, going through the whole procurement process and vetting. And the town is small, and there may not be, you know, economies of scale for a smaller contract to attract larger companies. Though there are, as I've mentioned before, there are other companies operating in Marin County currently. Final, as we saw in the slide, your rates are fairly competitive in Marin County in comparison to other jurisdictions as well. Next slide. But of course, competitive procurement, you never know what you'll get. You'll test the market for the lowest rates and/or best services. That process comes with a new state-of-the-art agreement. And as I've mentioned, you have some other haulers operating in Marin County that could be interested. Right? In terms of the timeline for negotiations versus procurement, the competitive procurement process takes quite a bit longer, around 18 months. And you're at the right time right now in assessing your options. You would want to start something like that in July of 2025 to allow as much time as possible for the process and for the transition period. However, if you proceed with some renegotiations, that's a much shorter timeframe. And which services, if you negotiate new services, those can begin earlier than that January 1st, 2027 date. And again, this timeline provides time for both of those things, should renegotiations be unsuccessful. Next slide. From what we've heard so far, the town priorities for this next round of negotiations and agreements really are to maintain low and as stable customer rates as possible, to still keep in mind the environmental and sustainability objectives of the town, and achieve compliance with current state laws. Keeping your current services, although there's, you know, opportunities to talk through what those are and evaluate which ones you'd like to continue and add. And enhance community programs and outreach to make sure that folks know what bin goes where and what things they're putting into their bins, and making sure they're doing that all properly. Next slide. So with that, we have staff's recommendation is to open negotiations with Mill Valley Refuge to establish deal points for a new agreement. That process is scoped for six negotiation meetings in which the deal points would be developed and flushed out. And at that point, if there's agreement on the deal points, establishing a new agreement that provides clarity, modernize terms and conditions, and, you know, a brand-new agreement for your next long-term agreement. Staff also is recommending to, you kind of reserve that right to release a competitive RFP should negotiations be unsuccessful. So with that, we're happy to answer.
Thank you. Thank you for that very concise, efficient report. Really good. So let's start here at the council with questions with Jim.
Yes, I'm looking at Slide 8, and I noticed that there's like three or four jurisdictions that are well above average. Any idea why that is? Are the contracts newer, or detailed? You know, build there, I could say, just getting up there is probably more difficult. But I'm just wondering what the cause of the higher rates are for them.
It's hard to tell. I don't know their specific agreement through and through. And these comparisons are helpful. Everyone likes to see them. But they are often apples to oranges. There are different services that may increase or decrease a certain rate. And I can say that TAM CSD is the only one that's a little bit different than the rest of the group on that far right. And that's because they procure and they operate their own trucks and things like that.
Also, if-
I would just add for the ones in green, just looking at where they're located, there's probably additional cost because they're all the way out, some of them are out in west, all the way out west. And so it's just longer drive times to get back to facilities, would be my guess. And also, when you're looking at rates, like Claire said, it's typically apples and oranges. The difference could be the city's franchise fee is 5% higher, so the rates are 5% higher. It's just hard to know unless you peel away all the components that go into the rate.
Okay. And on Slide 6, second point down says town residential customers maintain a 66% diversion rate. Then I look at the table down below, and I see commercial and apartments at 51% recycling, and residential at 79%. Is something mislabeled?
So the diversion rate is purely on, you know, how much recycling and compost there is in terms of tons over total disposal or total collected material. The bottom table is really representing volume and volume availability. Essentially, you know, residential customers are maximizing how much space and how much recycling and compost potential they have in comparison to commercial and apartments who have a little bit further to go. It's very typical of, you know, most places. But that bottom is more on availability of potential recycling.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else, Jim?
Okay, thank you.
Rosa, anything?
On Slide 4, where we talk about the different Senate bills and compliance measures, I want to understand, Mill Valley Refuge are currently, all of the collectors are in compliance with those laws? Is that correct? It's just that we don't have a contract that includes all of that language and all the specifics?
So you do have, so yes, all jurisdictions, unless there's a extension that's filed with the state, should be in compliance with SB 1383 at this point. Your amend, First Amendment to your agreement covered a lot of that, but it wasn't really incorporated into your main agreement due to the time constraints. So you do have the services that you have delegated to Mill Valley Refuge. Some of those services are delegated to Zero Waste Marin, and some of those are still remaining with the town. But those are included in your Amendment 1.
Okay, so when it talks about having a more modern contract, it's about getting all of those issues formalized and more spelled out than they are currently?
Yeah, and there's a little bit of a stopgap between 2006 and 2022 in terms of just general reporting that you'd want. While you have all of the specific reporting requirements needed for the state law, there's other factors that you'd want to create as well.
Okay, um, let me check, I think. It might be all the questions I have at the moment, but let me just make sure. Okay, these are probably more specific than we're at right now, so I'll just move on to the next person. Hey Fred?
The 66% diversion rate, is that resident-driven, or is that Mill Valley Refuge-driven, or is it a combination?
It is mostly resident-driven, because it's really based on the tonnage of what comes into Mill Valley Refuge. So the recycling tons that are received in the truck and the compost tons, that's what's used to then go over the total collected tons. There's, you know, additional efficiencies that come with, you know, your use of Marin Resource Recovery. However, it's mostly on the collected tons is what that diversion rate is usually referenced to.
Okay, so if we wanted to drive up that diversion rate, that comes back to an education-type process to try to get that diversion rate up?
Usually, that is the case. There's potentially opportunities for kind of what we call back-end processing. However, you know, really to drive that up on the front end is from education and outreach, and just getting folks to use their bins better and to use the compost and recycling more.
Okay, and then there's one I'm hearing. I think it says bulky item collection program with four per year for residents. Is that four per resident per year, or do you know? And do you know how many times that program's been taken advantage of?
I would direct that question to the company.
Okay.
Yeah. But it is, in terms of the agreement, it is four per household, or per account, per year.
Okay, and then one last question, that is, if we renegotiate the contract, that may or may not necessarily relate to lowering the rates?
Yeah, we don't have a crystal ball in terms of what the rates would look like. But with a longer-term agreement, you're gonna need new things like trucks and things like that, so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Eli?
Thank you. If we go back to Slide 6, which had that table with diversion rates. Thank you. So I think when we were talking about the slide, you mentioned something about an opportunity for, it sounded like for different types of things to go into recycling or compost cans that aren't currently going in. Are we talking about the ability to expand what is accepted, you know, by, you know, accepted in compost bins and recycling bins, or are we merely talking about residents taking, you know, recyclables that they currently throw in the trash and correctly putting them in the rec- Okay, gotcha. Okay, understood, thank you. Couple questions about recycling, and specifically about dual-stream versus single-stream. How many communities in Marin are doing single-stream, and how many are doing dual-stream?
Slide 8, that has at least all the jurisdictions. Essentially, all the MSS, Marin Sanitary Service, and MVRS are doing the dual-stream. The folks that are not are those serviced by Recology, which is Nevado, and then a couple of the West Marin folks, and TAM CSD.
Okay, and as far as the processors go, I know that MSS is our processor. Obviously, MSS also processes the waste that they haul. Recology, do they process their own waste at a facility?
I don't, I'm not sure where their Nevado stuff goes. My guess would be the closest Recology MRF is in Santa Rosa.
Okay, and then what about Bay Cities Refugees?
That is likely going over the bridge to Richmond.
Interesting. Okay, fascinating. Cool, and then I think my only other question for now is, who collects waste from the bins in our parks? Like, I know that we've rolled out composting bins as well as recycling and garbage bins in parks. Who collects the bins in public spaces, and what does that look like?
To my knowledge, it's Mill Valley Refuge Service who does that collection.
And they, okay, and so they just like send guys through the parks every so often? Okay, cool. Sweet, I think those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Okay, well, my questions have been answered, so I will open this now to the public. And I know that we do have some representatives from Mill Valley Refuge Service here. So you guys want to go first? Is there somebody else who wants to say something? Okay, well, whoever would like to speak first, you each have three minutes. So if you can kind of plan that, that'd be great. But if we need to take a little bit more time, we will do that.
Good evening, esteemed council. My name is Gene Delizopa. I'm the CEO of Mill Valley Refuge Service. I'm here with my fellow managing partners, Alex Averoni and Dave Bizio. We're all third-generation partners of Mill Valley Refuge Service since 1906. So we're honored and excited to be able to speak to you all tonight. First and foremost, I want to express our sincere gratitude to the town of Corder Madera for the trust and partnership that has been built over the last two decades with our contract. Our employees take great pride in being able to serve this community, ensuring reliable service focused on our customers. Over the years, we've navigated through significant industry changes together involving state laws such as SB 1383 and AB 341. And these laws have made a significant impact with composting and recycling participation. In addition, we've proactively addressed recycling changes, showing our roles in the community extends just beyond collecting waste. Now, looking ahead in 2025, one of the biggest areas of focus is going to be involved with Bill SB 54, which is referred to as the Plastic Pollution Prevention and Packaging Producer Responsibility Act. This law has the potential to reduce plastic waste and drive sustainable product design. And we're currently evaluating how that can change domestic markets when it comes to recycling. As discussions begin on the future of waste collection services in Corder Madera, I want to emphasize our commitment in delivering efficient, cost-effective, and environmentally responsible solutions. We respect and understand Corder Madera's responsibility in taking the best path forward, and we are eager to engage in these discussions. And we value the strong working relationship that we built with customers, residents, and the business community. We welcome any questions or comments, and thank you guys so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. So are there other people who would like to speak? Would you like to- Would you like to have your colleagues also say something? Or is there anybody else who would like to talk about waste management services in Cordermadera in the room? Going, going, gone. Anybody online?
We don't have any hands raised from attendees online. And we did receive some emailed public comment, which was shared with council prior to the start of this meeting and is made available for the public on the website. And no additional comments have been received.
Okay, so then I'll bring it back to the council for comments. And I think if you do also have questions for our applicant, our potential contract mate, feel free to ask those as well. So who'd like to start?
Start at that end.
Start over here, sure.
Happy to start. So I would say that, big picture, I'm totally comfortable with the staff proposal of proceeding with renegotiations with the understanding that we maintain the right to issue an RFP should the negotiations not go in the direction that we might hope. I would just say that one thing that I'm thinking about, you know, as I prepare to evaluate a potential contract, is, you know, the nexus between cost to our residents and level of service that they're receiving. And I'm thinking specifically of, and I know I've harped on this plenty, but dual-stream recycling, I think, is a little bit of a pain in the butt just for residents. You have to, like, you know, I think it's just really, it's remembering which can you got to take out. I know that we have recurring issues even how, you know, how many years on with folks taking out the wrong can. I take out the wrong can sometimes. You know, so I would say if there's some sort of creative solution we can come up with, some way of just making it easier for, you know, to streamline that process for folks, I would say that would be certainly something that I would view favorably and appreciate. I think the only other thing that I would just mention is, I know that we have Julie Kritzberger with our Chamber of Commerce with us tonight, and she has brought to our attention the, you know, the fact that it would be good for us to be mindful in everything that we do of building community, especially as it relates to our marquee event of every year, which is the Fourth of July Parade. And I was just gonna say, I don't know if you guys, I can't recall offhand if you guys usually have a truck in our parade. But if you guys wanted to take part in the parade, I think that would be welcome and appreciated. So those are just kind of two thoughts top of mind. But big picture, happy to move forward with negotiations, thank you.
Fred?
Yeah, I can agree with a lot of comments Eli made and also with staff to go ahead and move forward negotiations. And again, as the backup plan, if that doesn't work out, then we look at going to an RFP. I think we have a good relationship with Mill Valley. I appreciate the slide that you put in there showing the numbers with the cost because I think everybody thinks we're paying more than everybody else. But it looks like we're actually below a little bit. And I know there's numerous factors put in, like Belvedere probably has a lot more hills, smaller streets and stuff like that. But I think it just helps put everything in perspective. It seems like also if we did have to go with somebody else and do an RFP, not only does it prolong the process, again, we may have to, but it prolongs the process. But it seems like it's going to get really messy to try to switch companies just between trying to get new garbage cans. It's just going to, again, messy. I think what we need to do, though, through this process is make sure we're setting residents' expectations, not thinking that we're negotiating and that garbage rates are automatically going to be lowered. I just want to make sure we get that messaging out to residents. And the other thing I'd say also, which I know you could probably give me the numbers, but on the four free dumpsters per year per residence, I'm not sure how much that's being used at this point in time. It almost seems like, I'd almost rather have that cut down a little. And in lieu of that, Mill Valley Refuge is providing dumpsters for green waste that we can actually put into neighborhoods as part of vegetation management program that you guys provide, again, free as a service. In lieu, the town could work out schedule where to put those and that type of stuff. I think something like that would be more beneficial to neighbors down the road than four free times a year. I'll be honest with you, I kind of knew that was out there. We lived here, I think, well, I've been in the town since the early 80s. I've never used that service. Maybe it means I don't have a lot of stuff, even though my daughter says I do. I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I might add, like, part of our strategy in 2024 was changing our website so we make it more publicly available for all the services that we provide. Now, when it comes to the four, you know, curbside removals, we call them cleanups. If a customer's calling in advance and they're asking for, you know, an extra pickup, we train our staff to remind them to use this benefit. And what we were discovering going through this with our jurisdictions is we needed to make it easier for customers to find that information and leverage it. Now, I like the suggestion of potentially offering more so removals when it comes to yard waste and compost because part of the cities that we service, you know, there is a lot of vegetation, there's a lot of landscaping. We can take care of a lot of that green waste so that we can make sure that, you know, it goes to WM Earth Care and it gets repurposed for another usage. So we're definitely open to that. Thank you.
Thanks, and something like that's a win-win for both you and both for us. So I appreciate that. But again, the bottom line is, I can go with staff recommendations, so thanks.
I could support starting negotiations and then if things don't go the way we'd hoped, then we could always fall back on an RFP if necessary. In terms of which can to haul out in the week, if you're confused, drag them both out. And the guys on the truck know which can to empty, and you haul the full one back to your house, you know? It's not... I've done that many a time.
Okay, great idea. Rosa?
Yes, I support renegotiating. And if that doesn't work, we go to an RFP. And I also look forward to hearing more from the public about what is valuable to them. We did receive one email regarding that, but I would love if we could, you know, find out more and if there's a way that, you know, however the channels that we use in our, through the town to reach out and get feedback. We'd like to have that. I'd like to just ask staff to do that so that that's part of the negotiation. We know what's important. But, you know, let's move forward.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm wondering, I'd like to go back just a quick step to that slide. I think it was six that had the, showed all the different rates that all the different towns pay for waste removal. Was it eight? If we could just see that again, I am wondering if you can tell us, you know, what are the main factors that affect the rates? And, you know, because some that are way out in West Marin, like Bolinas, are the lowest in the county. So it's not always, you know, the location. And I'm just wondering if you can give us an idea of what are the most expensive things? So that if we do want to negotiate lower rates, how do we do that?
The most important thing to consider when it's doing, when you're looking at a rate survey, is each contract is different, meaning contracts can have different assumptions utilized when it comes to allowable costs and non-allowable costs. So there's a contract issue there. And then there's also a terrain issue. When we're dealing with very difficult areas to service a terrain, and I can use Belvedere as an example, it requires us to use specialized equipment to be able to provide service for Belvedere. And that can, in a way of in itself, that requires more costs. And also, it's distance as well. We always take that into consideration. In addition to the customer base as well. Long time ago with Belvedere, that used to have, you know, I would say more high-density of, you know, backyard service, residential. We're getting twice a week garbage service. We've kind of changed a lot of the approaches over the years with that. So those are important things to take in consideration. It's, and in terms of like negotiating lower rates, I think the most important thing is to ensure that the allowable costs make sense in terms of, is... When I say that makes sense, they have to be reasonable. And they have, and we work very closely with R3, and they do a good job looking through our rate application and making sure that we're making reasonable projections when it comes to labor, disposal fees, as well as costs related to automobile and truck expense. And that involves fuel, insurance projections. We really do, we do a lot of reporting. I am a big data guy. And what has been good, finding a lot of these insights, is it's allowed us to get more efficient. And when we get more efficient, we're able to take on more work, but also really adhere to a high level of customer satisfaction. Because at the end of the day, we're in the service industry and we have to take care of our customers. And our employees and drivers know that. And it's, we're very happy that that seems to be kind of the status quo with our culture.
Great answer, thank you so much. Okay, so I think, unless there's any other comments from staff or concerns, we consider a motion to support staff's recommendation? Or are we ready for that?
I don't, I don't believe a motion is necessary for this item.
Okay.
I think we have pretty, sorry, I think we have pretty clear direction from the council. Thank you very much, and thank you to our consultants, R3, and to the council for your feedback, and we'll take it from here, thank you.
And to Mill Valley Refuge for showing up, even though we didn't actually invite you, I don't think. It was really nice that you cared enough to come. I was wondering in Belvedere if you guys were offering coyote pickup service?
We made sure to give them the staff report.
Thank you, thank you guys very much. Okay, we'll give everyone just a minute to change places. I thought that coyote line would get a big laugh. Next up, we have our second and last business item of the night. Might be a nice, quick evening. We are receiving a report, which I think we asked for when we set this program up, on the short-term rental program. And we're being asked to provide direction to staff on amendments to the ordinance or which way we should go. So turn it over to this great trio, Amy Lyle, Martha Battaglia and Tracy Hagerty.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Rivasio and members of the council. As Mayor Rivasio stated, tonight's item is related to our short-term rental ordinance and program. So this item serves as an update to the program, which is required by the ordinance. But we are taking it one step further and asking you for feedback on the next steps of the program. So we do have a very bold recommendation, so I want to give you some context as to why. And tonight, we will have a presentation from both Martha and Tracy, and I'll be chiming in as well. But I just wanted to also note, we do have Mike Moriarty here, who is our communication and code enforcement manager. So we have a deep bench, and we also have Blair, our assistant planner in the audience, who's been a big support to this program. So I just wanted to acknowledge her work as well. You've got the full planning team here tonight. So short-term rentals in general are a very divisive issue in a lot of jurisdictions. They generally pose a challenge to neighborhoods. And there's a lot of external components that require a lot of regulation. So in a lot of jurisdictions, neighborhoods are challenged because of noise, parties, parking. In some situations, there's a high concentration, which actually changes the character of a neighborhood and how people experience their neighborhood. And because of all those things, there's a wealth of information and regulations all around the state and the country. And Martha will talk about, or Tracy will talk about a little bit about the background and how we came to the ordinance that we have. But we really came out very restrictive out of the gate for that reason because this is one of those issues that really has the potential to create a lot of nuisances. So instead of a prohibition, we have an ordinance crafted to open the door a little bit to provide that opportunity. But our ordinance is very restrictive. And for that reason, among other things, we don't have a lot of activity. And the program definitely is expensive as far as staff investment. And that's usually indicative of a first year of a program. You're creating a new land use, you're creating a whole new program, and it requires care and feeding as you go forward. So the first year is always going to be a little bit expensive. But for this program in particular, we're really seeing costs that will go beyond this first year that are outweighing the potential new applicants that we may be able to bring in, even with new amendments to the ordinance. So that's the balance we're trying to strike. And so we have the staff report that walks through that, but we'll be presenting that as well. But we really wanted to get your feedback on where you all would like to see this part of our regulatory world go. And our bold recommendation is that on reflection and projection of what we see, we don't see this being something that is worth our continuance and that we are asking for direction to prohibit short-term rentals moving forward. But if you'd like to go the other direction, we are going to be talking about the areas of the ordinance where there is potential to loosen restriction, to see if there's a possibility to bring in new applicants. So that's what's being presented tonight. And I will note, we have received some public comments as well. So those should have been provided by email, but we're happy to reply to any of the points within those public comments. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tracy and Martha.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and get started if you would please advance the next slide, thank you. Development of a short-term rental ordinance was a multi-year effort. The 2018, 2020 and 2023 Town Council Strategic Planning Workshops identified short-term rental policies as an important issue for the Cordermadera community. Development of a short-term rental ordinance was included in the 2023 and 2024 staff work plan. In, starting in 2022, we began with some outreach to the community. And a town-wide survey mailer, asking people to come online and fill out a survey related to short-term rentals was sent to all households in Cordermadera. A total of 549 responses were received. And those survey questions and responses are included as attachment one to your staff report. The responses were mixed, with 53% in support of allowing short-term rentals with regulations and 47% supporting a ban. There were several meetings and public hearings before both the Planning Commission and Town Council discussing short-term rental regulations. And ultimately, by a vote of three to two in September 2023, the Planning Commission recommended with reservations that the Town Council adopt the draft short-term rental ordinance. The short-term rental ordinance was adopted by the Town Council on November 7th, 2023, and went into effect on January 1st, 2024. The ordinance created a new chapter, 5.34, creating a short-term rental licensing program. I'll take you through, overview of the program if you go to the next slide. Go ahead. Advance one more. This is a map showing the location of some of our short-term rental properties. And since the ordinance became effective on January 1st in 2024, the town has approved a total of six short-term rental licenses. Five of those were approved in 2024. Two of those licensees opted not to renew their license for 2025. And those are the two blue icons, did not renew. And one new short-term rental license was approved in 2025. That's the orange icon on the map. And that results in four active licenses at this time. Have the next slide, please. When short-term rental regulations were adopted by the council in November of 2023, staff's preliminary estimates of the revenue that would be generated from TOT taxes was based on the number of unpermitted short-term rental listings that we had at that time and the experience of other local jurisdictions with short-term rental programs. And those estimates suggested that the town could expect annual TOT revenue in the range of $40,000 to $60,000. And the TOT that was actually collected in the first year in 2024 has been significantly lower than that estimate. And TOT revenue depends on factors such as the number of licenses issued, the number of rental days that are booked, and the rate that the licensees charge for their rentals. And then to date, the town has issued very few short-term rental licenses, which results in minimal TOT revenue, which is considerably lower than the cost of administering the short-term rental program. The TOT shown in this table is 12% of the revenues generated by our short-term rental bookings in Cordermadera. The town's tax rate is 10%, and the county has a tax rate of 2%. So the total TOT remitted to the town is that $11,332.58. And of this amount, nine, just over $9,400... And of this amount, nine, just over $9,400 is retained by the town and the rest goes to the county. And the table that you're seeing here is slightly different than the table that's shown in the staff report. The property owner of one of our short term rental licenses that's shown on the bottom row, after the staff report was published, came in to pay their 2024 TOT. So the, that's approximately $600 shown on this slide is, is not shown in the staff report and that is, that is the difference. Moving on to the next slide, please. To facilitate implementation of the short term rental program, the town contracts with a third party company called Deckard Technologies or otherwise known as RentalScape. RentalScape helps us to monitor short term rental activity and they provide a tax collection portal. And using RentalScape, municipalities can identify and monitor short term rental properties and gather a variety of data about their activities and their operations within the jurisdiction. RentalScape, as I said, also provides a way for our licensees to remit their taxes to the town. From the beginning, the short term rental program has posed some challenge for code enforcement department. And during the initial review of short term rental listings in January of 2024, we found about 75 properties that had recently listed on Airbnb or VRBO. And 45 of those were active at that, at that time in January. So in, we sent a detailed courtesy letter and an application package to all 75 of those property owners. And the letter provided information on how they could obtain a short term rental license or, or remove their listing and explained what the short term rental regulations were. A fewer than 20% of the individuals that received that letter reached out to inquire about how they could get a short term rental license. So that about a dozen people contacted us and said, how do I license myself? And ultimately only five obtained a short term rental license in, in 2024. And the staff report has a robust section on the town's code enforcement efforts related to short term rent, rental program. And as Amy said, Mike Moriarty, our code enforcement managers here, have specific questions about our code enforcement efforts surrounding short term rentals. Thank you. And just moving on to the costs of the program. This is showing the total program costs in 2024 with a conservative estimate of $29,000. And these costs include the cost for the third party monitoring company, which is RentalScape. The one-time mailer that was sent to all residential properties, educating them that the town had adopted a short term rental ordinance. We sent that in January 2024 and an estimate of the staff time spent administering the program throughout the year. And the third party monitoring contract with RentalScape was reduced from $11,000 to $8,000 for the calendar year 2025. The reason for the reduction is the, just the difficulty in using the platform. Really difficult to verify the accuracy of the short term rental data that's presented on RentalScape. And that affected our code enforcement efforts. And the platform's limited ability to really assist us with monitoring and collecting TOT. And should be noted, the costs on this slide, they don't include the ordinance development costs. Staff time for meetings and public outreach. We had a planning consultant that helped us to draft the ordinance and associated staff ports. And then there's another mailer for a townwide postcard promoting the short term rental survey from 2022 that's not reflected in these program costs.
Thing I'll just note on that is that we have had challenges with the third party software. And I will say, I don't think there would be a better third party software. I think they all have challenges, but we're really relying on them to scrape data and provide it to us to be able to verify if someone is renting illegally. So it's been difficult for us to work with them and they've had some issues with Airbnb themselves. And I think it's an industry wide issue. So that's one of the other challenges of having this program is that we have to rely on these third parties to do the enforcement. And they were nice enough to reduce the cost for us, knowing that our program is small and they're continuing to work with us. But we're having a hard time relying on the data.
Thank you for the next slide. Table, this table again is a little bit different than what's in the staff report. As I said before, we had a short term rental licensee that came in after the staff report was published to pay $600 roughly worth of their TOT taxes from 2024. So we've updated the total in that first row to reflect that additional tax that came in staff report was done. And this table, first row just shows the 10% TOT that's remitted to the town, because that's our rate. That's just over $9,400 and it excludes the 2% that ultimately goes on to the county. The program costs recovered include the, the first row, which is our licensed short term rentals. And then we have TOT tax that's paid by unlicensed short term rentals. So if they booked, had bookings after, during, throughout 2024 and they were ineligible, we collected taxes on their bookings and then they ceased to operate, which fourth row of this table is showing the fine that some of those unlicensed short term rentals had to pay. And the third row, of course, we have a license fee that's $500 per license. So we recovered from the, the cost of the program through collection of the licensee. The, the total collected is about $14,000. And again, from the, the program cost slide, the cost of the program is a conservative $29,000. So a big deficit we're showing there for, for this year.
And I'll say also, since we published the staff report, Airbnb did reach out and they noted that they would be willing to help with our TOT payments, because that's one of the other hurdles is we are paying for a platform for people to be able to pay their TOT. And it is far from seamless and it's been really challenging to be able to help our applicants pay, which it shouldn't be difficult to, for people to pay their taxes. So Airbnb did offer, because they do this with the other jurisdictions where they can just pay through the platform and they just pass it through to us. Other jurisdictions do say that's challenging because they just get a lump sum of money and they don't know who it's attributed to or from when or how. But that, they did state that that is available and that they'd be willing to partner with us on that effort if we wanted to. So I just wanted to note that that communication did happen after we published the staff report.
Okay. Okay, the second half of the presentation goes over a couple different policy options for the council to consider. Staff has identified two different policy options. The first one is to adopt an ordinance to amend the existing SDR regulations to be more permissive. The Town Council could elect to adopt a new ordinance that revises the current regulations to be more permissive to encourage additional operators. The ordinance amendment would be vetted by both the Planning Commission and the Town Council and would also, of course, include a community input as well. If the council desires to continue the program, staff recommends exploring amendments aimed at increasing participation while continuing to address nuisance impacts and also to protect, protect existing rental housing stock in, in Madera. The regulations that were adopted by the council in November of 2023 included a lot of discussions with the community at Planning Commission meetings and at Town Council. And as Amy mentioned, there were, you know, a lot of regulations were adopted really with the aim of reducing any impacts to the, the community and to neighbors. So to date, I think it's important to note that we have not received any complaints from any community members about any of the existing short term rentals that are operating. So I think that speaks to some of the thoughtfulness that went into adopting the ordinance and the regulations that are, are currently in place. So both a planning and code enforcement have identified some potential amendments that the council could consider. And this is kind of based on what we've heard from individuals that were interested in obtaining a short term license and were unable to for one reason or another, and also on through our experience of. So the first potential change that the council could consider is a change to the parking requirements. So currently, a short term rental is required to provide a minimum of two parking spaces. And that allows for an occupancy of up to a maximum of eight people. Any short term rentals with more than eight occupants requires additional parking. And in some limited instances, one parking space is sufficient. And this is for homes that are considered existing non-conforming for parking. So for instance, if a home was constructed with one covered parking space in the garage, then that would be considered an existing non-conforming situation and that would suffice the parking requirement. Parking cannot be located in the front yard setback of a property, which this is generally within a driveway. And this was a, a policy decision that was made by the Planning Commission, because the commissioners felt it was important. It treats the parking requirements for short term rentals the same as we treat parking for all residential properties in town. So the zoning ordinance requires two parking spaces for residents. One is required to be covered and neither required space can be in a front setback. So it's the same requirement for short term. So the council could consider allowing a short term rental property to use the parking in the front yard setback on the driveway to comply with the parking requirement. And the town was contact, contacted by two individuals that were interested in having a short term rental, but were unable to because they could not leave the parking department. The next potential amendment would be to allow short term rentals in the R2 multiple dwelling residential district. Short term rentals are currently permitted in the lower density residential districts, which is the R1, R1A, R1B and R1C. Currently, short term rentals are not allowed in either the R2 or, or R3 multiple dwelling districts. And they also are not allowed in commercial zones. The zoning ordinance permits single family homes by right in the R2 district. So the council could consider an amendment to allow a short term rental in a single family home in the R2 district. There was one individual that was interested in applying for a short term rental for their home in the R2 district. And they were unable to because of the zoning of the property. This individual did submit a letter, a comment letter that was distributed to, to the council. The council could also consider permitting short term rentals in owner occupied multifamily units. So this would be condos or townhomes in the R2 district. These types of units typically have, these types of units typically have a property manager onsite, which can, which can help to alleviate any impacts to the, to the broader community. If the council would like to allow short term rentals in owner occupied multifamily units and staff suggests implementing a requirement for an onsite host, this would allow for someone to rent out a room in their, their townhome or condo for less than 30 days while being present, which would help to, to address any potential impacts to the, the residential community. The existing ordinance has a cap of 75 days that a short term rental can be rented within a calendar year. The policy intent of this cap is to prevent homeowners from taking rental properties off of the market. And this can have the ability, this can result in challenges for individuals to find rental properties within a community and also can lead to increased rents. So there is quite a bit of discussion about this cap at the Planning Commission and Town Council hearings. And staff was trying to find kind of that, that sweet spot that would allow individuals to rent their homes and generate additional incomes when they traveled on longer vacations, but wouldn't result in individuals having the home vacant when it wasn't being rented as a short term rent. So there are many communities in Marin County and the broader Bay Area that do not have caps. And there has been an unintended consequence in many of these communities and a lot of these properties becoming short term rentals instead of, of rent, rent, longer term rentals. We have heard from a few licensees that the cap is restrictive and have had requests to increase the cap. Staff is not recommending an increase to the 75 day cap. We continue to think it is important to have a cap to prevent homeowners from removing rental properties off of, off of the market. And staff also believes that a cap reduces the potential for a short term rental to create a nuisance to a neighborhood. If, if a home was constantly being rented as a short term rental, it could have impacts to the, that surrounding neighborhood. The, another change that the council may want to consider is to add the ability to enforce listing a short term rental on a hosting platform as a violation. This change was recommended by the town attorney previously, and it's also recommended by our code enforcement department as well. So this change would prohibit or restrict the ability to list a unit for less than 30 days if you do not have a valid license. So under the current ordinance, a property owner is only in violation once the property is rented for, for a time period without, they do not have a license. And this change would simplify enforcement by addressing violations at the listing stage instead of when a transaction. The, the second policy option would be to rescind the short term rental ordinance and to adopt a prohibition. This is the staff recommendation, which is outlined in the staff report. As discussed in both the staff report and the presentation, participation in the program has been very low. A total of six licenses have been approved since it became effective on January, 2024. There currently are four active licenses. Yes, yet despite the low number of licenses, there's been a significant amount of staff time and resources devoted to administering the program over the last 15, 16 months. The program has resulted in a significant amount of staff capacity and funds being spent to allow a very small number of people to rent their house for additional income. And the program is also operating at a deficit. As Tracy discussed, the program costs have been a conservative estimate of $29,000 and yet the amount of revenue is just over $14,000 in the first year. So if the council directs staff to rescind the short term rental ordinance, the existing licenses would be valid through the end of the calendar year. And then starting in January, 2026, the town would implement proactive enforcement efforts. We, there would be a cost to, to having a ban. We would still need software to monitor who is listing properties on the platforms. And this cost, we estimate, would be about $3,000 a year. And in addition, there will also be staff time as well to, to enforce a prohibition. However, staff does anticipate that a ban would be simpler to enforce and also less time consuming. So the options presented in the staff report, the two we have just discussed, revising the existing short term rental regulations to be more permissive or rescinding the existing short term rental ordinance. For both options one and two, staff would return with a draft ordinance for the Planning Commission's recommendation. And ultimately it would return to the council for consideration and adoption. Option three would be to continue to implement and enforce the existing short term rental regulations. And lastly, if the council needs any additional information, then we can continue this discussion at a future meeting. And that concludes staff's presentation and we are available for questions. Thank you very much, especially for spending all that time working to come up with solutions. If we decide not to accept your recommendation, I don't think every town staff does that. And I, I really appreciate all the, the deep diving you did to go in there. So questions? Want to start, Fred?
Thanks. Michael, can you just maybe just high level some of the challenges and the issues you're seeing on the code enforcement side? Thank you. I'll say briefly, but thanks.
Sure. Thank you. You know, we have two issues. It really comes down to licensing and taxation. And so we've, we've highlighted that we currently have four active licenses in town. But if you go on these platforms, you're going to see there's 45 active listings. And it's a huge challenge to determine whether or not these are not only live listings, but there's an ability to lease these properties for less than 30 days. And even some of these listings that are active, they say that hey, to, to circumvent our regulations. Hey, it says there's 30 days or less, excuse me, 30 days or more. That's, that's what, you know, we're trying to comply with your regulations. They're circumventing the licensing, but they're in a position where they're advertising their home in compliance with the regulations. But what happens is within the embedded in the platforms, Airbnb, VRBO, a few, you can go in and rent for the weekend. So we have to spend a lot of time going through the platform, the rentalscape to see, are there actual bookings that occurred? And so it's become, it's very challenging. Cooperation and transparency with the property owners to be forthcoming with information, very challenging. I spent a lot of time, the 75 packets, 75 packets that went out, I wrote most of those. I spent time monitoring 30 days to, you know, giving ample time for people to respond, send second letters, crickets for months. I had to go into the town property files to go in and look and find phone numbers and email addresses for past permits to, you know, reach out, which I know that they're going to, you know, see this email to get engaged in correspondence. You know, there's been, some of the prospective licensees, they had ADUs that recently purchased. They wanted to rent them out. It's prohibited by state law. Really just, with regards to licensing, I think I've provided some information on some of the challenges we've had. But with taxation, you know, with taxation in general, people are very conservative. I will tell you that we received some information from Rentalscape that said that one of our current licensees have been in, you know, STR licensed, excuse me, STR renter for more than 10 years. They've collected, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in STR rentals. And in those transactional data, 12% was collected. None of that money ever came to the town. But we don't have a mechanism in place to collect that 12%. We don't have the numerical data with regards to the transactions to hold people accountable and, you know, and collect that tax, that tax to the town, the TOT for the town. So it's very challenging.
No, it's good. Another question for you. If we did do a prohibition and you do, I want to say catch somebody that's doing this, what's the ramifications?
We have a couple of different avenues. I mean, our administrative citation, we can issue a simple citation of $100, but the ordinance was highlighted to me today, it's a violation of $1,500. I will tell you that the, when you read in the staff report that we recently, we initiated some code enforcement measure and issued some citations, some admin sites. Those were failure to provide TOT with corroborated information on the booking. So we basically reached out, asked for the, you know, they're not license holders. We asked for the collection of data of the TOT. They failed to do that, so we issued the admin site and we relied on the reviews. So we can corroborate the rentals and the actual rentals based on the reviews. That's the only way we can really corroborate a transaction occurs. Rentalscape, they'll tell us, hey, this property had, you know, 75 rentals. And yes, we say that we're having challenges and discrepancies, but they're confident that those transactions occurred and those rentals occurred. And the discrepancy comes in when we're asking for our property owners to provide and to provide their listing and transactional data and be transparent with us. And it's met with a lot of resistance. And when pushed up against, you know, and so to speak, sometimes they push back to start receiving complaints, false accusations. It's been very, very challenging. And we try to find the good in everyone. Plenty, you know, the town's philosophy has always been a patient. You know, I've sent so many different letters of, you know, warning, second notice, third notice. And, you know, only last resort do we actually implement fines. And we're trying to maintain that philosophy and that even embedded collaboration with our community. But there's definitely some trust issues that have happened, you know, have occurred. Yeah, so regardless whether you rescind the ordinance or amend the ordinance, I see the biggest challenge is to 100% ensure that you can't even list it on these platforms or the ability to book for a weekend, that would constitute a violation. Whether you rescind it or not, we're still going to spend time monitoring this. But, you know, you're talking about four licenses and you have thousands of residents in town. And the staff recognition is pretty clear. We're here, we're here to, in enforcement in general, I mean, I take calls oftentimes wondering how to circumvent our violations, you know, like, hey, can you tell us what the requirement is? And I tell them, how do we get around that? Or even some local regulations in terms of, hey, what time do you guys actually work? And are you doing parking enforcement before eight o'clock? And are you at the park before eight o'clock? So these are all circumventing the system. So there's not a lot of respect with regards to, you know, code enforcement, due process of our local regulations and just code enforcement in general, very challenging.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that.
We don't envy your job for sure. After that, after that description, it's, I can tell that you're dealing with tough situations.
I'll go back to the table.
Are there more questions?
Yeah. The options you mentioned to change the ordinance, would that put a dent into the numbers at all? In other words, we only have four now. Does that mean we're going to wind up with 50 of these or is it going to be minimal overall?
I mean, I think there's about five people we've heard from that were interested in obtaining a license and were unable to either because they were in the R2 zone or they didn't comply with parking. So I think our estimate is there'd be probably five more if some of the recommendations that staff made were implemented. And, you know, it's, it's hard to tell if over time more people will be interested in applying for a license as more people may be about it or what have you. But we don't think we're going to have 50 of these licenses.
And it still won't get us to cost recovery in any sense, right?
Yeah, we don't anticipate that.
And the cost recovery also, that probably does not reflect staff time above and beyond potentially? Yeah, the cost recovery, I think, I can't remember if there was something in there about staff time or not.
Didn't include staff time.
It does not include staff time.
Creation and.
Correct. The initial drafting of the ordinance and the consultant work that was done. So the, the cost that was presented was really from January on the launch of the program, not the hearings and everything and the outreach that happened previous.
Okay. And I just have a couple more. And again, I'm not familiar with the zones. You're better at it than I am. R2, which includes multifamily, which includes condos and townhomes. Those condos and townhomes could have CCNRs that basically prohibit short-term rentals, right?
Correct. And we would require approval from the HOA for a condo or a townhome to do short-term rental.
Okay. And I just have one last question, Pat. It's more for Amy. If we decided tonight to rescind, I want to say, the STR ordinance, how does that process work? Do we just rescind it and, or do we have to do another ordinance saying we prohibit them?
Yeah, we would. Tonight is just for direction to staff. If you were interested in no longer permitting short-term rentals, we would come back with an ordinance that would repeal the short-term rental ordinance, but we would also include provisions in making, making them illegal and awarding the fines for violation. State law does allow enhanced fines for violations of short-term rental ordinances. I believe it's 1,500 for the first violation, 3,000, and then 5,000. So it would come back with that. And it would require an ordinance with two readings.
Okay, thanks. And if we went that direction, it sounds like we could have teeth in it. Again, consequences related to the fine part of it, potentially?
Yes. I mean, we could also consider violations. We could consider, and this would require a little more research, so I'm just saying consider whether to include fines against short-term rental services for advertising properties in Corder Madera when it's illegal.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thanks. Just a few questions. Can you remind me, where is the, where are the R2 and R3 zones? And what was the policy rationale for not allowing short-term rentals in those zones?
Property that's zoned R3 is Robin Drive Apartments on Paradise. The R2 zones are scattered throughout Corder Madera. A lot of the parcels around Town Hall are R2. So a lot of times it's duplexes or it could be apartment complexes. The apartments near, off of Pixley, all those townhomes are R2. There's a handful of properties along Meadow Suite that are also zoned R2. So it's kind of scattered, scattered throughout, you know, it's more intensive than your, you know, R1 or your lower-density residential.
And obviously, R3 people are not going to be short-term renting an apartment that they rent. But for R2, what was our rationale for not allowing short-term rentals there?
Usually in those multifamily areas or areas where you have an increased density, there's an increased opportunity for nuisance.
Got it.
For noise, parking.
Got it.
All those things. And I will say, our ordinance didn't really differentiate when, for instance, they're just renting a room and the owner's in residence. So that's one of the changes that Martha highlighted that, you know, depending on your direction, that could be a change. Because when the owner is onsite, there's almost no nuisances based on experience from other jurisdictions. It's when you do not have a host onsite, that's when you really get the major impact. So that's how our ordinance is crafted. So we were really focused on single-family neighborhoods that had a little more distance between homes and just less density.
Got it. Thank you. And then as for the TOT, do we still have a substantial amount of outstanding TOT? Either from, you know, since the ordinance took effect or from before the ordinance took effect? Because I'm just thinking that that's, that's important, not just to the town, but also to the chamber.
So you'll see in the staff report, as an incentive for the current or the actual listing residents on the STR platforms, we tried to incentivize licensing, legalizing their short-term rental listings. And we indicated, we indicated at the time that if they complied with the current regulations, we wouldn't go back and attractively collect TOT. And so we thought that would like bring 74 people, 75 people to the table. And as you saw in the presentation, 20% initially engaged, approximately 20%. I engaged in some of that dialogue with some, and some of these residents, they had created these listings during the San Jose fires.
Yeah.
And they were temporarily like creating an opportunity for somebody who was displaced from their home.
Yeah.
And they really had no intentions of continuing down that path. When I spoke earlier about the 10 years and the hundreds of thousands of dollars that were collected in STR revenue, we didn't learn that till recently, like this week, when we asked for a deep dive into one of the properties through the rentalscape. So I can't really tell you how many, you know, how much TOT was collected over the 10 years and when we.
But it sounds like maybe a moot point if we said as part of our ordinance that we're not going to.
So I'm sorry. I just wanted to give you as much background information as possible.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And then as far as TOT that's collected under the ordinance, is, I assume that the, you know, the proper amount is still being remitted to the chamber?
I'm not sure how it gets submitted.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then I think my last question was, and, you know, I think this, this gets to a point that I'll make during the discussion. But I know that when we asked about people potentially renting out townhomes, you know, in communities where there's an HOA, Martha, you mentioned that we would first get approval from the HOA. And, you know, as I think about how can we streamline this thing so that staff isn't having to babysit this program and these renters so intensively? Why is staff responsible for getting approval from HOA? I would think that the renter would be responsible for getting approval from the HOA.
Yes, and I think your comment really represents that balance. We try to do a lot of collaborative work with the HOAs. And, but at the end of the day, we do not enforce CCNRs. So it is not our role to say yes or no based on their CCNRs. They would need to be forthcoming of their compliant. But we would want to do some outreach to make sure we knew where they were allowed and where they weren't based on those CCNRs.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I would think that at the end of the day, that sounds to me like an issue between a resident and their HOA. But thank you. Those are all my questions.
Down here?
Yeah. I know that there's numerous changes that would take a lot of, a lot of time to flesh out. But if we just wanted to do a quick change, requiring a license to list, how quickly could that ordinance be pulled together? And would that help you at all before, while we fledge out all the other items?
That's a great question. And I will say, when it comes to touching an ordinance, it's very difficult to do only one thing. Because we will likely find other things we want to do in a very quick fashion and it, it kind of snowballs. So if we wanted to be very specific and do one thing, it still takes quite a bit of staff time. So I would suggest if we're going to make changes that are in line with the second option, that we do all of that at the same time and not make one small change if we're not going to be exploring a prohibition and not going to be doing a full.
And the second option is abolishing, right?
Right. So you have the two options. So if we were going to do a portion of one of those options, it just is not as effective because it still takes a lot of time to go through that public hearing process to make a change.
If I can also add to that, if we did this clause that you're asking for.
I can't hear you.
If we, if we implemented what you asked for, a quick prohibition for the listing, it doesn't solve the problem with the lack of licensing. It makes, but what it does do is it gives us more teeth in the enforcement side. So I just wanted to highlight that. So yes, 100% will have more teeth and a clear path to enforcement with reliable information that can't be manipulated by or changed in any way by the actual property owner. But it doesn't speak to the licensing and any taxation. So those are the things that I wanted to just bring up.
Okay. Vice Mayor Thomas.
Well, you know, I could ask a lot of questions, but they still aren't going to get us to enough revenue and enough, you know, enough revenue to cover the expense of administering it and enough TOT to make a difference. And so I kind of hesitate to even ask my questions. But, but I will. Okay, so there was mention of the parking that their parking that was in the front setback would not be considered, i.e., driveway parking. But most residents actually park in their driveway because they have too much stuff in their garage. So I'm kind of wondering, so are those folks in some kind of violation by doing that? Are homeowners in a violation of doing that?
One who is not in the short-term rental program, but just normal.
Yeah, just normal residents.
Technically, no, because our regulation is when you are building a new home, have to allow for this mini-covered spots or parking spaces. And so in this situation, this is an annual license. So every year, we need to confirm that there is adequate space and they're meeting the standards of the ordinance. So it is part of the ordinance that we're enforcing because it does require that they have adequate parking within their garage. So that is, that's why Martha brought this up because it's an area where we get a lot of pushback considerably because people don't always put cars in their garage and we know this. And so it is a more onerous component of the ordinance. But it is, it is something that goes beyond what we require for a normal residence because it's an, it's an annual license to operate something that goes beyond the residential use of the property.
Okay, I think we sort of addressed this. What was the level of complaints or problems before the ordinance? And the reason I say that is that when this first came up, I thought that, you know, we were sort of solving a problem that didn't exist. But at the time, it seemed that we should have something on the books. But it seems that by trying to, as often happens, because just in the normal course of things, you know, were there more complaints of short-term rentals compared to complaints of noise of just regular residents? Was that so much, you know, did that push up, you know, the crime rate significantly?
Most jurisdictions create regulations because there are significant nuisance problems, or because there's a significant amount of people operating not paying TOT, because there's no requirement to do so. And in our case, I think there weren't a lot of complaints, but knowing that they exist in other jurisdictions, and they are a problem, one, it's important to put those regulations into place. So there's some standards. But also, from looking at the direction, it was also providing another economic opportunity for residents while still maintaining the housing stock and reducing those nuisances. So we opened that door, and unfortunately, we didn't see the volume that we expected.
Right.
If I can add as well, I do think there was a recognition that there were short-term rentals that were operating in town. It was ambiguous what our rules were. And so I know we would get people asking, can I do a short-term rental in town? We'd be like, well, technically, no, because we have a permissive ordinance, and it's not a listed permitted use. And they'd be like, okay, is that a no? Is that a no? So it was very unclear, and it was hard to answer simple questions about what the town's policy was, because we never actually had a policy. There were some, while I fully agree, and there were very few complaints, but there were some loud complaints in certain instances that kept occurring. And then I also think there was this issue of, if they were happening, they were taking, potentially taking away business from our hotel, and, you know, local hotels, without also paying, you know, playing by the same rules, essentially.
Say, one thing I failed to note is the short-term rentals that are operating right now are good players. They are, there are not complaints. And I think we're really lucky to have operators that do the right thing. And you see from the comment letter, one was talking about how they vet their, the people that are staying. And that isn't always the case. So we're also very fortunate with the people that have come forward to operate, that they are operating in a good manner.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. First of all, are there other major rental players out there other than Airbnb and VRBO? Or are those still the two biggies? Is there anybody else?
I don't think any of our operators are using any other platforms, but there could be other ones out there.
Because to do my research, I pretended like I wanted to stay in Cordera Madera. And I went online, and I did some research on both Airbnb and VRBO. And there were only a total of actually four, right now, places available, compared to many, many more down in Mill Valley, and many, many more in all the other towns. So are there still, you said 45, I think, Mike? That are they still operating? Because they're not operating on Airbnb and VRBO.
So you're not seeing them? So we see with Rentalscape, we're able to get a little more transparency in the actual existing bookings, so we can see, excuse me, listings. So we can see the actual listings. And so what happens is, with a click of the button, they can make it...
But when I went on looking for a rental...
Right, so they're not...
They're not showing those to me. So that means they're not publicly listed for rent, right? Or not?
I haven't, I can't speak to that, because we looked at the Rentalscape platform, and it shows the actual profiles. And so, like I said, you can make it active or inactive with the flip of the switch. So those active profiles are in existence. And so, property owners can be back in business, and, you know, like that.
You said they might pop up, knowing that you're looking for them, so they only pop up when they want to rent it, and then go dark again once they do. Ah, those sly little dogs. Okay, so my big question is, you said at the beginning that intentionally, and I remember when we talked about this, that we wanted to start out being pretty darn restrictive, because we didn't want to cause a problem of having this stampede of sort of unwanted people. But it sounds like we might have overdone that a little bit. And maybe that could be streamlined. I mean, when you said make it more permissive, I don't really like that language so much as making it more streamlined. So are there other ways to streamline? One idea I heard from a hotel operator today was, you know, the county comes in and does the inspections of all the hotels. Can we get the county to do the inspection so that you guys don't have to go check and make sure they got a fire extinguisher and all that?
Not likely. Usually, each jurisdiction monitors their own program. The county does have their own short-term rental program. But every ordinance is different. Every city's regulation is different. So we're, we only have four operating. So, and we do an audit every year of a certain percentage, and last year, that meant one. So that's the level of audit that's required in our ordinance.
So you don't actually have to go and inspect to make sure that it's safe? Because safety, I know, is a, I mean, that's one of my concerns, that we are first protecting public safety by making sure people aren't renting, you know, unsafe property. So, but we don't actually do that.
There's a variety of checklists. So the licensees self-certify. And as part of that, they need to demonstrate that they have fire alarms, fire extinguishers.
So they can send you a photograph or something?
They send us photographs, yeah, and then they do checklists.
Okay. Because I don't know, I mean, enough about it to know how to streamline it. But the TOT that's been collected, now how much was collected on those five units, the total? Because what was the total TOT that came in?
What's kept by the town is about $9,400.
So if we could double that, or triple the number, then we would get close to cost recovery?
Yeah, I mean, it does depend what, like you said, it depends on the number of licenses, but also how much, how many bookings they have and what they're charging. So opening up to successful renter, right, would probably be less TOT than additional single-family homes, would probably charge more for a booking, if that makes sense. And I will say, the cost of this first year is not going to be the cost of ongoing years. If we keep the program, it will be less. But the question is really the community benefit of having a program that's really benefiting just a handful of people, whereas the regulations preventing those nuisances is really the thing that's creating that larger community benefit. And it does create a lot of staff time to run this program. And so, I think you bring up an interesting question of, well, how many short-term rentals would it take to create that balance? And I think the original projections were far exceeding what we have now, and what we project we could get based on the people that have reached out. So we're not seeing the projections really being right-sized to the amount of work the program requires.
Well, the 45 number, where does that come from? That's the total number of people who have properties registered for rent on VRBO and Airbnb, but they're not necessarily active?
Correct.
Okay.
Profiles, but they're not either active, or an ability to... Like, there's a publishing, like you can make it, you could publish it to the... So that's...
And do you think that they went dark because of our new ordinance? Or...
Oh, well, I've had many conversations with many residents about taking... You know, they don't have licenses, so they need to pull down their listings.
Unless they want to apply for a license?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the goal, we want to encourage participation.
I did hear, just incidentally, that the application process was really complicated. And so, you still don't think, though, if you streamlined it significantly, that it would result in enough more to make the difference financially? You're saying you don't think so?
No, and I feel like I need to say, the application itself is pretty simple. I think the issues are the standards that we have in place.
The standards, that's what I meant to say. The standards were really strict, right?
They are difficult. And I think that's where people struggle, because we're asking a lot of the homeowners to be able to participate in the program.
And so the changes that you've suggested with allowing the driveway, and maybe the R2, those you think would increase it a little bit, but still really not enough to make a significant difference in terms of the burden on staff versus...
Yes, and I will say, the planning team is great, because they do remember who comes in. They track, who is asked the question, where did they live? Where, what zoning district did they have? Was their situation unique? Or is it something that we can identify as a potential change? So we've really been tracking that information, and that's what they've relayed. So we have a good understanding of who would potentially want to apply.
And it's not enough?
In our opinion, no.
Mayor Ravazio, moments ago, you asked about, you know, could we have the county help with these audits or the inspections? And I'd just like to add that, and just to embrace some of the challenges we've had. So in our application process, and in the ordinance, it says that we'll do an audit just to verify safety measures, right? And so we did one this year, one out of the five. And that resulted in a complaint to the town, overreach, and, you know, and it complicated things.
From that licensee?
Yeah, and maybe just not understanding what that audit was. It was a safety audit. But it was all in the initial application process that they participated in this. And they felt that it was an overreach by the town. And, you know, just a continued issue with trust. And it was certainly, you know, we went out and did the inspection. And I think we said, hey, you know, your CO2 just needs to be updated. But I think there was a concern that we were auditing the numbers with this listing, right? Based on what we're being informed with. So what I'm trying to say is, is that even this one slight audit resulted in the complaint to the town council, or at least one council member that wanted to have a sit-down, that wanted to discuss this in length. And it just shows that, you know, the challenges, just, you know...
It wasn't an official complaint filed, was it? It was just a conversation and a questioning, or was it, did it get more serious?
I wasn't privy to the entire conversation, I think.
Well, somebody knows. Okay, so thank you, everybody, for your questions. Are there comments from the public? We open it up now for any public comments on this matter? Are there any online? Oh, would you like to speak? Would you like to speak? Oh, okay, go for it.
Avenue. You know, I was opposed to this ordinance when it came through initially. And largely because of safety, because people renting from out of town are not familiar with things like fire evacuation, or earthquake drills, and so forth. And also, the potential impact, particularly if someone's renting 75 days, on neighborhoods. People getting to know their neighbors, neighbor helping neighbor. But looking at the data now presented by this great report by the staff, what I don't understand in the questioning of the council is what we have is an ordinance that requires licensing. We have 45 rentals, only five licenses. If we make this easier to do short-term rentals, the licensing issue will still be there. We'll now have, we'll now have, you know, 10 licenses and 100 rentals. So these are people who are basically violating the law. And we've heard that enforcement is extremely difficult and takes a lot of staff time. So I'm just saying that I hope the council would consider those things in the delivery. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Is there anyone online? Anybody else in the room?
Yes, we have four hands raised online. We'll start with David Adamo.
David, you can unmute yourself and go ahead.
Yeah, hi, sorry about that. I was, it's not my laptop, so I was trying to figure out how to unmute. So yeah, I'm one of the four or five. I've always been in favor of making sure that, you know, regulations are set, and, you know, everybody's abiding by those. You know, I'm totally in agreement with, you know, having a business license, all of that. But let me start by saying, you know, myself, I'm not renting because I want to. I think it's a beautiful place where we live, but it's a hardship. I have somebody that is the only other person in the house. They are, you know, going to nursing school, money is tight. I reject like 75% of my requests. I'm very particular. I make, I've had, you know, five-star ratings ever since I've done this. I communicate with my neighbors, I, you know, meet the people, all of that stuff. So I'm just one of those people that would like to see this program extend a little bit longer. We've done, you know, we did a lot of work to get to where we are now, to kind of fold things and close the chapter. I feel it might be premature. I don't know if there are other towns in Marin that have, you know, banned short-term rentals, or if we will be the first. But I feel like, I think we could work together. There's one thing that Airbnb does, they have an Airbnb community, where I could meet with other people, and we could learn from each other, encourage people to do things properly, and get more people to, you know, sign up for the business license, get more revenue. I just feel like, I don't, I'd rather just give it a little more time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Are there others? You said four?
Yes, we have Susan Wolf. And before I unmute, or while I'm doing that, I'll say, we did receive some email public comment, and it was uploaded to the website and is available for the public to view.
Hi, yes, I'm Susan Wolf, and I have a home that I rent through the program. And I agree with the previous speaker that we've gone through a lot to get the license. I think the program deserves some more consideration. I'll address a few of the comments that were made. I do have the email that I sent, so I'm not going to repeat all those points. However, I think the process, I think you have to ask, if there were 45 people who were active online, and you only got five or six people who were able to obtain licenses, I think that's an indication of the licensing process. And I think it needs, you need to take a look at how that's been designed and implemented. I think it's very onerous process, and it's very restrictive. In other communities, that's not the case. I think I noted that, for example, Petaluma has a two-page application. There's only seven questions you have to answer. They have a successful program, and they collect the tax, but there's not so much staff time and monitoring that's necessary. So I think other communities are able to do this in a successful way. And I think it's puzzling to me that Cordera Madera has not been able to do that. And I don't think the issue of it impacting the rental market is a valid one, because if you're only renting your house for 75 days, or whatever the cap is, there's no way that is financially feasible unless it's your primary place of residence. And I think that can also be a requirement, that it's your primary place of residence, to be able to be a STR host. I know in other communities, that is the case. I also think that the parking is an issue, and singling out short-term rentals, not allowing them to use their driveway. Parking is unfair, because that is not enforced for regular residents. And there are a lot of people who don't even have garages. On the lane where I live, two of my neighbors, they don't even have garages. So that's not even possible for them if they had wanted, if they wanted to park somewhere else than their driveway. Also... Also, it's, you know, Cora Madera has made the license process very expensive. I'm I'm not protesting that. I'm just noting that that's maybe also a factor in in terms of people wanting to participate. For example, $500. Sorry, okay. Anyway, other other cities, it's $50 for just the application.
Thank you very much for your time. You've gone over just a little bit.
Okay.
I'm sorry for my cough, everybody. I can always tell when the acacia trees are blooming. So are there?
Next up, we have Robert Wolcom. All right, hopefully I said that correctly.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions slash comments was one would be especially if you were to straight ban the short term rentals is if you guys have evaluated what the impact would be on the small businesses, especially considering we have the shopping malls here in Cora Madera, which is really the only shopping mall left in Marin with the Northgate Mall pretty much shutting down. And then also maybe when it comes to updating the regulations of the houses and trying to maybe streamline them or in some way loosen them, looking at trying to get people to come in. What might be preventing people is the qualifications for the the houses themselves and making people feel like if they want to do it for a month while they're on vacation, they're having to pay this fee, but also having to follow regulations that would be similar to being an HOA in a sense.
And then we have
Thank you very much. One more?
Yes, one hand raised from David McPherson.
David, go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So first, the staff report was really a masterclass in complete evaluation of the history of this. I attended all the five meetings before the adoption of this short term rental ordinance. And my opinion is pretty much still the same. This was always an ordinance or law that was in search of a non existent problem. I remember our town manager had indicated that there were no nuisance complaints. And Airbnb started 18 years ago. So before this was brought before the town council, we had some 13, 14 years of experience of homeowners, property owners handling the management of their short term rentals without creating issues for the town. So with with that backdrop, I'd really like the town to think about taking a step back from trying to either get rid of the ordinance and prohibit short term rentals or create additional rules that might streamline it and continue this hearing for 30 days or whatever it takes to get more input on what if the town just trusted their homeowners to manage their properties, their short term rentals for two years, let's say. And look and see what happens during that period. Does it create the nuisances that the ordinance was designed to address? Or is again, there's no problems because Cora Madera can be trusted, their homeowners can be trusted to to manage their properties accordingly and revisit it in two years. Otherwise, I mean, I just think prohibiting short term rentals affects so many people that need to rent out some of their rooms. And more, even trying to streamline it does not seem appropriate. So that's what I would suggest is continuing it and considering a third policy option, which would be to suspend the ordinance for a period of time and then determine if, in fact, it's even necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
That was our last hand raised and no additional public comment for this item.
Okay, so I want to bring it back to council for a discussion. So especially if you know surely which way you would like to go on this, I'd love to hear from you first. So if you have strong feelings one way or the other. Eli?
Thanks, I will just to to let my colleagues know where I'm at. I don't have any interest in banning short term rentals in Cora Madera at this time. I think this is a very expensive place to live. These are points that I made when when we first adopted this ordinance. I think this is a really expensive place to live. And I think we've heard from a number of residents who shared with us that the ability to do short term rentals, even if for a limited number of days throughout the year, is an important income source for them. And I do believe that homeowners do have a property right, you know, to monetize their homes within reason, obviously, in a way that respects the rights of their neighbors to to live in peace. But I think that we have a very well and thoughtfully developed suite of ordinances around nuisance, noise, you know, things like that on the books. I I don't recall, you know, if we think back to before the short term rental ordinance, when short term rentals in town were technically banned, but in practice, just, you know, kind of enforced on a complaint based, oh, wait, on a complaint basis. I don't recall us having a big problem with short term rental nuisances. I am aware of exactly one nuisance in the, you know, 30 years that I've lived here. I'm sure there've been a couple others that I'm not aware of, but my point is that it's, it was never a huge issue for us. So with that in mind, you know, I think the ordinance that that we are discussing tonight was designed around worries about the effect that it would have on the town if we suddenly threw open the floodgates and saw hundreds of short term rentals popping up throughout Cora Madera. That hasn't happened. In fact, we have almost none. So I don't think we need to worry about being too lenient on short term rentals between A, the fact that it seems that people who are interested in short term rentals have almost no appetite for any kind of regulation whatsoever. And B, the fact that even when short term rentals, again, were effectively unregulated, we didn't really have a problem. So I I think that, you know, the direction that I would like to go is a little bit of a shift in mindset away from thinking of short term rentals as businesses and thinking of it more as homeowners using their properties, maybe having a guest, you know, you know, and and not as like a a different land use, for example. What I think is absolutely clear is that if we're gonna keep any kind of policy on the books, we need to prioritize making it work for residents and work for our staff. I think I'm sure we'll all agree that the amount of time and money that's been spent on a program that is currently serving five people is ridiculous. And so I think we need to either make this into a program that works better for our staff and can serve, you know, a reasonable number of our residents, you know, or or not. But, you know, I I I think we're we're gonna all be in agreement there. To run through the policy points that were outlined in the staff report, I would say I would absolutely allow parking in driveways. I think that's just a normal thing that everybody expects. When it comes to requiring a parking plan as part of the application, I would say heck no. When it comes to requiring even photos, I don't even know if I'd require that. Like, we can hop on Google Earth if if we're hearing from neighbors that, you know, there's all these cars and no parking. We can, we can drive by and see if there's a violation. But again, I just wanna, I wanna focus on making this easy for applicants and easy for staff so that we're not having to do a bunch of babysitting. I would absolutely allow short term rentals in the R two zones. I think I certainly understand the idea about wanting to have a host on site. I I don't know that there's a particularly efficient way to enforce that. So I would say maybe let's let's really examine that question critically before we commit if we allow short term rentals in R two. Let's let's look at how that would be enforced before we before we make a a hard decision there. I I definitely agree with keeping the 75 day cap. I think that having, I think the the two most important, to me, the two most important parts of this ordinance are, you know, the the time cap and the owner occupancy requirement, just to make sure that, again, we are, we are making sure that Cora Madera is for Cora Madera residents and it's not bought up by, you know, hedge funds who want to just rent out these homes. So I would say the cap is super important to keep if we want to talk about increasing it, you know, to like maybe 90 or something. I I don't know, but but I think that the cap is super important. I I agree that we should not be allowing listings, you know, from people who don't have a license. I I think that seems like a good way to streamline enforcement. And I think it was Amy that mentioned, and it really resonated with me, the the possibility of putting some of the onus on the short term rental licensing or listing companies, right? Because I think I think we need to hold these these corporations accountable, too. If they are empowering or enabling, you know, abetting and enabling residents to to flout our laws. I mean, that's not right. And and I do think that that we have a right to stand up and and enforce our rules, even in the face of companies like Airbnb that that we think of as being much more powerful than little Cora Madera. So, you know, that's kind of where I'm at, big picture. I I will say that, you know, I was really disheartened to hear, you know, both verbally tonight from from Mike and what we saw in the staff report about some of the just flagrant flouting of rules and the the mistreatment of staff. I mean, that's, that's, you know, to have staff come to you and try and educate you about a program that we've set up to try and allow folks to 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 use their homes how they want to and then to attack staff because you don't like the regulations, that's just unacceptable. And and, you know, the the concept of collecting TOT and then just hanging on to it, pocketing it and not remitting it to the town, that's absolutely unacceptable. So I, you know, I think those those, that that in particular would be a top priority to me is making sure that we do have a a way to make sure that TOT that's being collected is making its way to the town and to the Chamber of Commerce. Because our our small businesses deserve that support. So the the last thing I'll say is that, you know, as I kind of wrestle with, you know, how how could we reimagine this thing to be a little bit lighter touch, a little bit more complaint based rather than, you know, prescriptive or proactive? You know, one, one idea that that pops into head into my head is, you know, maybe we lower or eliminate the registration fee, which I know is designed to recoup staff costs running the program. But maybe in, you know, maybe we make up for that by upping the fines for violations. You know, I think, I think if if you're flouting the rules on our short term rentals, that should not be like $100 or $300 little slap on the wrist. Like, that's not okay. You know, and and like Mike, you you mentioned that, you know, Cora Madera's philosophy has always been educate, yes, but it's it's education before enforcement. You know, and and I think the fact that you said you were giving folks a first notice, you know, first notice and a second notice and a third notice before an administrative citation, that's very generous of you. I don't know that that's necessary, right? I think if folks want to be renting out their house, you know, sure, if if you rushed into it a little quickly and and didn't take the time to learn all the rules, fine, we'll give you a first notice. I don't think that we need a second or a third notice if we come and tell them, hey, here are the rules and you gotta follow them. So I I I think I'll wrap up by just saying again, I think I I'd like to see us steer a little bit more in a lighter touch, complaint based approach here. That's gonna be easier on residents who want to apply and easier on staff. And I think if we end up seeing nuisances down the road, we can obviously revisit this issue like we're doing tonight. You know, but but again, you know, I don't, I don't know that we have a history in Cora Madera of serious nuisances. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eli. Is is there anyone on the council who has the other point of view that they would like to express? Or are we, who goes next? Jim?
Well, I remember the last time I was on council, this issue came up. And we decided not to, we decided to leave the zoning as it was, which meant it short term rentals was a was not an allowed use. But now that we've gone down this route of allowing it, I don't think we should back away from it. And, you know, if you look at the the occupancy taxes paid, and then you gross it up, how much the revenue was. For one person, that was $31,000. For somebody else, it was $27,000. For most, many people in this town, that's a significant piece of change. And it may make determine whether or not they can stay in town or not. So, you know, I guess what I'm saying is, since we already have decided to go down this route, we have to learn how to make it work. And if it's inconvenient for town staff, just remember this town wasn't set up for your convenience. Learn to work with it.
Okay, Rosa, do you have something to?
Okay, well, first I will say that the difficulties that the town staff has had are significant, and I don't want them ever to be abused by people who either are angry or just don't understand the rules. We went down this road and, you know, we have to make sure that we're not, you know, disregarding what it created for other people. I will say, as sort of throwing in a piece of from personal experience, that as someone who, I have a daughter that lives in LA and a daughter that lives in Brooklyn, and we always use Airbnbs. And once New York changed their law, it went from us being, having a choice of maybe 10 Airbnb, Airbnbs for a particular trip to having maybe two and also not the greatest. So what I'm getting at is that as, and I I I don't know what if LA has done anything about it yet, but the the higher regulation does reduce the number. So I'm I'm just throwing that out there as like, that might be the reality that we might not get the numbers back that we want. That said, you know, I'm very much in support of people being able to rent their homes as as Airbnbs. I do like, so the the it's, it's, it's hard because if we're doing this because of the benefit of TOT, I don't know if we're gonna get there. If we're doing it for to cover cost, I don't know if we're gonna get there. But if we decide that we're gonna try to get there, I would say that definitely loosen up on the parking, that they would be able to park, that driveway parking would count as it does for, I I always think that, you know, you don't want parking to be the determinant of things, because people figure out, you know, even if they have to hike in, park somewhere else, they'll be okay. I also would say that to allow it in, allow short term rentals in R two districts. I'm not so sure, especially if it's an apartment, that it makes sense to say that the owner has to be there. Because that seems like that would be a little tight. I think the cap could stay as it is, at least if we're looking at it the way one of the callers mentioned, to just see how this goes for two years. I wouldn't touch it. And then I think overall, just looking at how much we regulate, because there are a lot of homes that people live in their own homes. You know, maybe even my own that wouldn't pass your safety inspection. It's gonna be realistic. So I I don't, I don't know. It's just, you know, a buyer beware kind of thing that, you know, if those renting it say, do you have a, you know, a fire detector or a carbon dioxide detector or all these things? You know, maybe it's on them to to ask those questions. But I also support a lot of the ideas that my fellow council member Eli Beckman mentioned. So I will just leave it at that and just say that there's a lot to think about going forward. Is it? How do we make this worth the effort, right? Because if you're not getting the TOT and you're not covering the cost, as much as I completely support short term rentals, the dollars have to work. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, Fred?
I'm gonna be the lone wolf. I could actually support doing the prohibition. And I'm just gonna summarize it this way. It doesn't, and I understand people on the phone, it does generate income to them, and I know that's important to them. So I'm just looking at it from a different perspective. It just seems like the program overall, it's not financially either feasible or sustainable. Even if we got another, from my hearing, staff say, we may get another five, maybe 10, but even with those kind of numbers, it's not going to be economically feasible. The thing with the R two districts, the condos and the townhomes, that's fine to try that. But I think what's gonna happen is I could see HOAs just sitting there saying, we don't allow short term rentals. Because if I was a member of an HOA, I think that's the direction I would go. But again, there's no hurt in in trying that. But that's that on the R two. If we do, it sounds like council may be going a different direction, which, again, that's fine. If we do, it sounds like council may be going a different direction, which again, that's fine. I would like staff to track your hours on this. And that includes, you're going to have to go back to planning commission. If there's any community outreach, please track hours. Because I want, one of the most valuable resources we have is staff time. And I don't look at it, at what you're coming to us as an inconvenience. I just think you're coming back to us with the reality of the program and I appreciate you coming back and being upfront about, sitting there saying, this is what your recommendation is. So, I appreciate that. The other thing is just, I did some quick math while people were talking. We budgeted, I think, 860,000 in TOT tax this year. So, the 10,000 coming in from that program, it is something, but it's not a significant portion of what we bring in. And then just one last point to kind of what Amy said about, you know, sometimes we have to look at the wider community benefiting. In this case, we're benefiting four, five residents, which may be fine, but we have to look at the overall community also sometimes. And again, that factors in monetary staff time. There's another, other items or factors that needs to be factoring. So, again, my key takeaway from you is no matter what you do, please track your time. So, when you come back to us, you can sit there saying, we spent 200 hours, whatever amount of time, and that includes you also, Michael. So, those are my comments. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all very much. I have a few comments here. I hope I can read them. First off, I would like to say in reaction to something that was said by a council member, I do not think our staff is in any way asking for this town to be run for their convenience. I think the reverse is true. I think this staff has bent over backwards on this and so many other projects to do all they can do to make things work best for the town. And I, I really was rankled at that remark.
You're here.
Thank you. So, one thing I would like to note is that not everything balances out. You know, we often, parks and rec costs more than it, we take in, but we subsidize. And if this is a program that's worth subsidizing, then let's not be so anal on it that we have to have every single thing, you know, have a zero balance. It's just not the real world to do that. I heard from Airbnb, right, a couple of days ago, saying that they would love to come and give us a presentation on best practices and what other communities do to make this not such a burden and that there's a right way that they've, they've figured out. So, I, you know, and you mentioned that Airbnb has also offered the service to actually collect the TOT tax and get it to us, which sounds major to me. If we can delegate some of these management tasks to these partners, then we shouldn't have to have as much on our plate. I agree the parking should be allowed in driveways. I don't think you should make them have covered parking. I think that as long as they have a space to park. And, you know, it seems like it should be based on how many places are they offering? If they've got a maximum of four people, then maybe they only need to be able to park one car. But if they're going to go to six people, then they need to be able to park two cars. I don't know. And at the same time, you want to streamline it, I know, and not get too detailed. I agree that R2 should be fine. I don't think you need a host on site to live there. I think, I like the idea of, of having the host meet the people and check in with them, but I don't know if you can legislate that. I liked what Eli said a lot about, you know, once, once we get it streamlined and we set it up right, we let it be complaint-driven. You know, if we're not, if we're not hearing complaints, you know, it, it wouldn't be a bad thing to just kind of let things ride as, as we can. I think the idea of making it prohibited, prohibitive to have a listing without a license, you know, that's really interesting that I went online to search and there's actually 45 registered listings that I can't see because they're not offering it up. And I went to different dates. I didn't just do one week. I kind of checked all around to see what was available and there were never more than four or five in Corder Madera. So, not sure how we get control of that part of it. I do think, you know, it was a bit of a Pandora's box to open this up, but we kind of knew that because Corder Madera reminds me a lot of my husband. We, we like to do things the hard way and get it right by doing it the long way. And I think that as things are changing in the world, we're likely to get more requests. And so, if we prohibit it, I think we're just going to be dealing with it again in a couple of years and having to bring it back again because we're going to find out that people are doing it anyway and we're not getting any TOT tax. So, you know, I'm sorry. I know you guys are working really hard on this. And whatever we can do to streamline it and get Airbnb to take up the responsibility for collecting the TOT, I don't know, does VRBO do that as well? I don't know which, whether they do or not. But I would say not relax those safety standards. You know, I think it's not a big deal to ask them to send you a photograph of their carbon monoxide detector, which is the big one, and also a fire extinguisher. Because I think now that we're licensing it and if we license them and something terrible happens, we could be liable, I think. Right, Amy? Oh, let's see if she's paying attention.
Question I would need to do further research on and get back to you at a later time.
Okay, yeah, it's not, it's not essential, but, you know, I want to be, I want to make sure we're safe and that we're taking care of people who come to visit. And so, that was the only other point that I had. So, is there a motion? Does anyone want to make a motion or how, where are we?
I think this is direction only, but I just.
We don't need to make a motion.
Your excellent comments made me think of one other point that I wanted to make that I forgot, which was kind of just around on the safety element, making sure that we're assuming a level of responsibility that is, you know, meets all of our, you know, covers us from a liability standpoint, but also is realistic in terms of what we can do with, you know, our limited staff bandwidth. And I, you know, I'm thinking that like, you know, well, both from a staff and an applicant side, like I think asking for photos is, is one thing. I think asking for like plans is another thing. And I can tell you that for, for a layperson to be asked to draw like a floor plan is a very intimidating thing. You know, and I'm also like, I'm looking at our application here and I see like, you know, the, the application itself is, is just one sheet and it's simple enough, although it does ask for APN and I don't think your average homeowner knows what their APN is or even where to find it. But, you know, and then there's like three or four or 12 pages of checklists here. You know, like, I don't know, maybe instead of these all being checklist where you have to initial every single line item, maybe it's, maybe it's, you know, a document of like, here's our requirements, sign at the, you know, kind of like a terms and conditions type thing. But again, you know, I think, I think just a critical eye to user experience and just trying to figure out how we can cover the critical bases that we need to be covering, you know, in a way that's easier for staff to enforce, easier for applicants to comply with and does actually think critically about, you know, what are our must haves and what are our would be nice to haves, but maybe don't want to invest, you know, in building an enforcement regime around. So, that's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I was just thinking, okay, if we were able to really get 45 licensed renters, that would be nine times the current TOT tax. So, eventually there may be real TOT tax being left on the table if we don't do this. And we all know how important that TOT tax is. So, can I, is there a motion to be entertained here from either?
Mayor, we don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion. Okay, excellent. So, we can just move on? Are we, are we done? Okay, thank you all. I'm really impressed that you gave us that much information about how we could go against your recommendation. Really appreciate the effort. Thank you so much.
And, and please know that, you know, at least I'm not like, you know, concrete and stuck in the mud, you know, about going forward with it because I'm always going to look at the money. I'm always going to look at what it thinks costs. So, I know it's not as sexy as, you know, going forward and just doing certain things, but, you know, we have to be fiscally responsible and also we have to make sure that you all are not stressed out to the max because you do an incredible job. I feel like this is one of the most incredible groups of people I've ever worked with and I've worked with some really great people who are so competent and so knowledgeable. And you guys are and you deserve the best treatment. You do not deserve any abuse.
Here, here.
Abuse, we're not going to stand for it. At least I'm not.
Okay, so we do not need to have a motion here? Do, would you guys like any parting, parting words? Adam, Amy, anybody? We're all good?
Thanks for the very.
Thank you.
Discussion and.
Thank you for the very good presentation. Really appreciate it. And Mike, thank you for all you do out there. Okay, so that brings us to council reports and, and don't leave. We're about to hear from Adam Wolf. Come on, it's got to be big news here.
I did want to start my report by saying, we celebrated Tracy Hagerty's 10-year anniversary.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy. Don't go anywhere.
Celebration for her and that's always a fun time to be able to celebrate one of our staff members who's not only been here for 10 years, but actually has grown into multiple different roles and seen her develop into a planner and starting with as a public works customer service rep. So, it's, that was, that was enjoyable for me, having been her direct supervisor for many years as well.
And as a part of our community as well, I think.
And lives here in town, absolutely. So, yeah, that was, that was very nice and wonderful. On the staff side of things, I also wanted to let the council know that our very own Park and Rec Director, Tim Berry, was installed as the, I think it's called Division One or Section One President of the.
Parks and Recreation Society.
California Parks and Recreation Society. And that's a district that stretches all the way from the North Bay all the way up to the Oregon border. So, I think that just shows sort of the leadership that Tim is and dedication also to just his profession and leadership that we have in our, in our building and on our team. With respect to that, I did send out a public comment related to Park and Rec that we received a letter and just wanted to note that we got a nice letter about the quick turnaround and responsiveness of our Park and Rec team, Sydney Bliss, but also our maintenance team in getting the dog park patched up within 24 hours. So, I wanted to let the council know about that. That's always fun when we get those. March 6th at 3:00 PM, we have the Pickleball Grand Opening. That's Thursday at 3:00. So, just a couple of days away, another exciting opening for our parks. And unfortunately, we've had a, witnessed a few people already somehow playing in there. So, we'll fix that. And then another, I have a couple more just announcements. I do, did want to announce we're doing our, an update on our finance director recruitment. We have interviews tomorrow. I want to publicly thank in advance our, our great panels, panelists who are going to support the first round of interviews. We have our Larkspur City Manager, Dan Schwartz, will be on the panel. Nevada City Manager, Amy Cunningham, who was a former finance director as well. And Daria has also agreed to be part of the panel as well. So, I'm just really thrilled that they were, are supporting myself and the town in that way. The State of the Town, we have a date that will be, and I just want to, before formally announcing it all to a huge audience, I want to make sure that it works for our council members. So, we're looking at April 16th, 12 to 2. Julie's still here, right? So, that's correct, at the Best Western, at the Best Western Inn. And it's going to be sponsored by, it's going to be a chamber event. I think another great way we can support the chamber, make sure their membership gets sort of access to this event as well as the public. So, it will be a public event and just as soon as you can, let me know if that date works for you. I know Councilmember Andrew, we got your message about up until April 15th and I know this is the day after, so you may be exhaling. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm saying, I know we have, up until April 15th is a challenging day, but this is the day after. I don't know if that works for you, but it'd be great to get, to have you there. So, if you can, please let us know. April 16th at 12 to 2:00 PM at the Best Western for the State of the Town. And we haven't done this, obviously, in, I think, five years or so, so.
We used to do them all the time and somehow they stopped before COVID or around COVID. So, it's really nice that we're getting them started back up again.
And then right around that same time, our Volunteer Fair is going to be April 19th and we're going to hold that at the Community Center. So, that will be a fun event and more messaging on that to come out soon.
Okay, who wants to go, are you done? Okay, who wants to go first? Go ahead, grab the mic.
I'll go first. On 2/19, attended age-friendly Corder Madera meeting. Some, there's discussion just about new generational center. On 2/21, I attended a Transportation Authority and Rent Orientation, which was pretty interesting how they operate. 2/28, attended MCCMC meeting. 3/3, which was yesterday, I attended a Marin Transit Board meeting. Just a couple of things there. We did have a discussion on, on East Francisco Boulevard, which was, property was purchased by Marin Transit for a new bus facility. That project is probably about four years down the road. But we also discussed an engagement plan, which will be done, done in conjunction with the City of Saranfell to make sure that there's proper outreach to that, to the community surrounding that facility. And we also approved a four-year, $73 million contract with Marin Airporter for some of the fixed routes that Marin Transit does. They did an RFP and Marin Airporter was the only one that responded back. Part of it has to do with, there's lack of facility, bus facilities. Again, large swaps of land within Marin. So, that's all I have. Thanks.
Next.
On February 20th, I attended an MCE Board Meeting. They made us go to Concord for this one. So, that was a fun half a day with travel time. On February 26th, the, I guess it was the Mariner Cove NRG did a little honoration for Lee and John Howard, who are moving out of Corder Madera after they are, yes, but they've, they've dedicated decades of their lives to serving our community, especially around disaster preparedness. So, that was really nice and we wish them nothing but joy in this next chapter. And then on February 28th, I attended the Endless Quest ribbon cutting that our, our fair mayor did a wonderful job at. And then I just wanted to add that I believe this week, we have a new restaurant opening called Miho and it, it looks fantastic. So, that's exciting.
Either of you, whoever wants to? I just have a couple. So, on 2/25, I attended the Marin NRG Timely Topics, which was lessons, LA lessons from the LA Fire. Among the things that I came away that I thought was really interesting was understanding where, so they lost water pressure. One of the reasons is that even if you, well, there was a lot of damage to, the fire damaged the piping within the houses. But to avoid that, turning the water off at your, say, outside your garage, that doesn't fix that problem because the water is still going through your, if you have an irrigation system. But if you go all the way out to where that concrete water marked sign is and you turn that off, that preserves the water pressure. So, that's something that our firefighters know about, but there was problems getting that done in some of these fires in LA. And another thing they said is, stay in your car, move your car. Because one of the big problems was engines could not get to the fire because they were blocked by abandoned cars and that you're always safer in your car. So, I thought that was very helpful. And then on 2/26, I think you guys said 2/28, but I have 2/26. May I have the wrong date? MCCMC meeting? Is that the 26th or the?
Wednesday, whatever the Wednesday.
Okay, well, anyway, I was there. I don't know what day it was, but I was there. Okay.
All right, Jim?
Yeah, on February 21, there was TAM Orientation. Feb 27, there was a TAM meeting. Pretty important, noticeable things. The Nevada Narrows, in theory, it will be done this summer, which is a project that's probably older than Eli. which is a project that's probably older than Eli. Because I remember it was, they were working on it in the early 80s. Okay, Bellum Boulevard off-ramp, they're widening that. Okay? And this year, TAMs will revisit the spending allocations. So if you want to move money from building freeways to doing something else, let them know what your trade-offs are. On the 20th, I was in Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. And on March 3rd, there was Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness. And basically, items that were talked at both meetings were CAL FIRE has issued new updated fire hazard maps. Came out in basically two phases. One was on February 24th. And then the local ones came out on the 28th. And then, once the fire department, Central Marin Fire has analyzed it, they might be asking us to modify our wildfire zoning. And then as soon as Sacramento comes out with the regulations, we will probably be asked to implement, I guess it's called Zone Zero, which means clearing all the plants from around, five feet around your house. Okay, so that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Wow, we are, we are kind of busy. I'm, I'm impressed with how many meetings we attend and everything that we do. So I have a few things. I'll try to go quickly. The mayor business has been super fun. I loved introducing Tim to the Parks and Recreation Society, who already knew him and loved him, and I got to do that. The ribbon cutting at Endless Quest, they are an amazing retailer that everyone should go and meet. They really are on an endless quest to make you the absolute finest cup of coffee. They're going to be kind of partnering with Book Passage. You know, Book Passage has a cafe, but they don't really like running a cafe. So they're going to be, they've, they've worked out some great ideas there. As you said, the ribbon cutting is Thursday for Pickleball. And it looks like we will miss the rain once again, thanks to Tim's scheduling. So I hope everybody will go to that. I think the State of Town event, Julie, you can clarify. That's a, we, that's a paid ticket event, right? We, we have a caterer and then we need to cover the costs of that caterer. So somehow we pay for those lunches, but then we can, we have to allow the public to attend the presentation part if they want to. We don't have to feed them, but we have to allow the public in. So I'm assuming you guys are working on all that. Okay. And then the Volunteer Fair, everybody should know that if you're a nonprofit organization in town that needs volunteers, you can have a table there, right? And they, are you the contact for that? Or is there somebody else running that?
Rebecca is going to be the contact, but yes.
Great, I think people will love that. Okay, so the other big thing, and this was just, was this this morning? Yeah, I think it was this morning or yesterday. No, it was yesterday. The Marin Healthy Youth Partnership had a group of teenagers that presented a really compelling slideshow about how they need to have additional ordinance, additions to the ordinances in every town regarding vaping. Because just like the whack-a-mole that we've been playing with the tobacco industry for decades now, they're not technically selling flavors, but they're doing all kinds of new modifications to pitch it to teens, including low prices. They want, there's a 99 cent now vape you can buy. And all kinds of things. They have actually four points that they're asking for, and they're going to ask all of the communities to do it. So I spoke to Rebecca today and we're thinking about letting them do a presentation at a MCCM meeting because then they can reach all 11 municipalities at one time and they don't have to go all the way around. I have those slides if anybody wants to see them. Apparently vaping products have been banned in all the counties surrounding Marin. We are the only ones still selling them. And the high school students say they are more accessible, easier to get than ever before. And Marin vaping among teens is way higher than it was in like 2022. So some things happened that our efforts to try to ban it somehow made the industry more creative about how to market to teens. So enough on that for now. I did meet with Mayor Wei of Larkspur, and she has so many good ideas. You think I have a lot of ideas. She has amazing ideas that I think we're going to be hearing about because we're talking about, if you guys like the idea of a joint meeting between Corder Madera and Larkspur, they used to do those back in the day. You don't make actual decisions, you don't vote, but it's a discussion about the things our two towns have in common. Why are you laughing?
Doesn't make decisions, sounds like a great use of time.
Doesn't make decisions. Well, I think because we aren't, we aren't actually an elected body and we're having a meeting with two elected bodies, we really don't have the, the, the right to make, make motions, I don't think. I attended the chamber meeting, board meeting for the first time today. And what an impressive bunch of people. They are not just business people. They're people who really care about Corder Madera. They know they're the backbone of our wonderful retail sales tax.